This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Seeing the presence of a quorum of the regional school, Amherst-Callum Regional School Committee, I'm calling to order this meeting at 6:35 PM. I will call out your name, please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Dumling?
Dumling, present.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, present.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, present.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, present.
And McDonald, present. At least one of our other members that are not here will be joining us later. Also, as mentioned earlier, I would propose that we switch the order of the published agenda and switch to items and begin first, actually just move item number one to later in the agenda, so that we begin with item number two, the public comment, RSC topics only. Continue with athletics, item number three, and then move to item number one, which would be our executive session. So is the committee amenable to that agenda change? Wonderful, okay. So we will begin with public comment. For folks that are watching from home, I apologize, I was late in getting the document ready. So it is, I don't believe that it's on our website yet, but I did post it on my school committee Facebook page. So if for some reason you're not able to read along as I project this on screen, please feel free to wander over to my Facebook page and grab it from there. And we have some public comment right, sorry, the voice comment is for the joint meeting, so. Are folks able to see that, the public comment document? And just a note, just as a reminder for folks again at home, this includes comments that came into our email address with the subject line "public comment." We do receive a lot of email and there were some emails that came in without the subject line "public comment." I apologize if you had intended it for "public comment," and if so, please resend it in with that subject line. So that is the conclusion of the public comment. So now we move on to what was item number three on our agenda, which is discussion of the athletics for fall 2020.
Yeah, and if I could queue it up and then turn it over to Ms. Stewart. So what we'd like to do, and Ms. Stewart's done a really nice job presenting a summary of the information about what the changes to the sports seasons, the modifications to fall sports, because that's what we're kind of primarily talking about today. And really, sport by sport going through that with some pros and cons towards the end and open up for dialogue. I think it's likely the case, although the agenda said, you know, possible voter, that, you know, we're happy to come back next week because we'd like to present this. I know you have some public comment, but there may be some questions that you have that Ms. Stewart or I are able to get more information about. And we try as best we can in a decision this big to have you all be able to deliberate, ask questions and consider it before coming back to next week for a vote. So, you know, I think we're comfortable with that timeline. Most schools, districts in our area are planning on voting, some have voted already, but many are voting next week. And to clarify why you're voting, we are now going to be starting the year remotely. And according to the state rules, any district starting the year remotely needs a school committee vote on whether to have athletics or not. If we weren't starting the year remotely, it would be a different topic. We still want to fill you in, but on this one, it actually does require a vote of the regional school committee up or down on athletics. So now that I get all that kind of non-fun stuff out of the way, I'll turn it over to Ms. Stewart, who has some slides to present that were also in the packet that is on our website right now. But thank you for being here, Victoria.
Thank you guys all for having me. You guys can all hear me, okay?
Yep.
Yep, great. So as Dr. Morris said, I'm going to speak to you guys about the reintegration of athletics in our schools. The MIA did come out with a press release on August 19th in regards to the MIA COVID Task Force that they put together in the summer on fall sports. And in this document, it states that individual school committee meetings must approve of athletics because we are starting remotely. The attached document also has, presents each sports and seasons which we are allowed to have. And additionally, the MIA is referred to the EEA guidelines to determine the risk levels and activities of each sport. So these are the levels of activity that we can have. Level one being the least amount of activity for a sport to hold. That includes any individual or socially distant group activity. And then level four being the most activity that we're allowed to have. That includes tournaments, and if you can't see it on your screen, in parentheses, it says outdoors only. Each sport is categorized as either lower risk, moderate risk, or high risk. The low-risk sports can participate in all one, two, three, four levels that were seen on the previous slide. And as far as moderate and high risk, they have the same rules. They can participate in level one activities, but they can also participate in two and three if modifications are met. And the MIA did come out with modifications last week for each sport. So you can see here, I know you guys received the slides beforehand, but the hyperlinks to each modifications for the sports are attached to each sport. As you can see, the green, cross-country and golf are low-risk sports. Moderate-risk sports are field hockey, volleyball, and soccer. These are the sports that we are allowed to have in the fall. The only sport you see missing here is football. Football has been moved to the floating season because it is seen as a high-risk sport. And I'll get into what a floating season is a little bit later. As far as the winter season goes, as of right now, basketball, hockey, and wrestling are seen as high-risk. Indoor track and swim and dive are moderate risk. And alpine ski and nordic ski are low-risk sports. I just say as of now, because as we know, things can change. They may not be seen as a high-risk sport. And the MIA is in contact communication with DESI as well as the EEA on modifications that may need to be met for winter season sports. And they will be meeting again in October to discuss any of those modifications that may need to be taking place. So this is the floating season. The MIA gave us now, instead of having three seasons, we have four. So the floating season happens right in between winter and spring. And right now, we just have football there. However, if we choose not to have certain sports in the fall for any reason, we would move these sports to the floating season. And then the spring seasons, the regular spring sports. Like I said, as of now, tennis is low-risk. Softball, track, baseball, and girls' lacrosse is moderate risk, and boys' lacrosse are high-risk sports. So none of these seasons overlap. Each athlete can play all these sports because they don't overlap. As far as modifications go, regardless if you're a low-risk sport, a high-risk sport, or...
Could I ask you one second? So what Victoria's going to get into now are the modifications for fall sports, because that's primarily what we're going to talk about tonight is the ones that are more proximate. But I just wanted to pause if committee members had any questions on kind of the schedule and the first part of Ms. Stewart's presentation. You know, we could ask it now and then before she gets into the details.
Ms. Spitzer?
So just a quick question about this concept of a floating season. Is the motivation that hopefully in a few months, in say February, that conditions in terms of either testing or vaccines or, you know, something outside of the school's control would change? Otherwise, I'm just curious about why they're considering moving sports to February, I believe it was, where it might be really hard to play. It would definitely be very difficult to play football outside in February, it seems to me. At least in our area.
Yeah, so they're definitely, that was the hope. Just because football is a high-risk sport right now, they don't want to have that one in the fall. Moving sports such as like maybe golf or volleyball, maybe having some type of normalcy of the sport altogether. So they can actually, once you see some of the modifications, you'll kind of see what I'm talking about. Because a lot of the modifications don't allow for, you know, the same type of play. You'll see that later on. So I think that was the whole point of the floating season. And at least also to have football for sure, hopefully.
I had a question. Did they, I read through the press release and the MIA website on these sports, but I didn't see any reference to decision-making. The modifications of the sport have been published right now, but how much of that is based or dependent on local or regional health metrics? So this is saying there's a football in the floating season and there's these modifications, but will things change sort of like moving between what might be allowed? And that, I can't remember whether it was step one, two, three, four for a high-risk sport? Does that change at all depending on what your local or regional case count, you know, metrics are? Or is that just sort of, it just goes? That part was confusing to me.
Yeah, so I mean, as far as the levels go, they are allowing competition to occur, but no tournaments. So the MIA is not going to have any state tournaments all year round, regardless of if you're in the spring or not. So that is something to keep in mind. However, they are allowing competition. And I believe, Dr. Morris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the Board of Health has approved of us having volleyball, which some schools haven't. So that's another reason for, again, the floating season and the levels of play.
Yeah, so we'll get into volleyball in a little bit, but I think Ms. Stewart's right. So for instance, the fall sport, that's the only indoor sport. So if you looked at that list, that's the only indoor sport. So there are some Boards of Health locally that are, and I'm not speaking to ours and Amherst, but that are recommending that that move to a floating season because it'd be later on, as opposed to the other sports which are all outdoors for the fall. And so it allows for more local decision-making. Now, the hard thing is obviously you're affected by what our neighbors do. So if we're going to have inter-school athletics and no one else moves volleyball, and I'm not picking on volleyball, I'm not saying it should or shouldn't move, but any sport moves to the floating season, you need other districts to do the same thing. So it's a little bit of a dance right now. We have talked about it as superintendents. We had a conference call today, actually, every Wednesday we meet. So it is a little bit of a moving target right now because it will, there's an interdependence between school committees and superintendents and athletic directors. That's perhaps not as well-articulated as it would be if we weren't dealing with all the other stuff. But I think to Ms. Stewart's point, that is another point, a part of the floating season is the flexibility to make decisions that perhaps some sports might be better played at another time of year. Hopefully that helps some.
Are there any other questions from committee? Yep, okay.
Okay, so when talking about modifications, just so you guys know, these are summarized. So there are more in-depth and in detail on those hyperlinks, like I said. However, cross-country, virtual course previews prior to the day of the meet versus the typical, you know, in-person preview the day before the meet can occur. Staggered start times with eight to 10 student athletes just to maintain proper social distancing and masks. Masks need to be worn at every start, at the finish, and during the race. But however, if you, you know, get that head start, you can take off that mask. And if you have that social distance, you can take off your mask. But once you see someone and you're close, you have to put it back on. Field hockey, it's a moderate-risk sport. A lot of their rules have changed. They have now only seven players on the field, including goalie at a time. Typically, it's 11 players on the field, so there's less players on the field, same-sized field. And all players must wear face masks as well. They can take it off and take a mask break, they call it in the guidelines. They can take a mask break if they're 10 feet away from anyone that's on the field. And they also have no face-offs. So it's going to be alternating possessions for each possession. Golf, golf's interesting. It is low-risk. However, we do use a public course, so we just need to keep that in mind when looking at all these modifications. We use Amherst Golf, and more people are golfing now. So only essential personnel are permitted on the course. So that means only coaches and student athletes. We don't really have control over that because we don't get the course to ourselves when we have practices and games. There needs to be a single tee start time of 10 minutes between each group. So that's also something we would need to talk to the golf pro about. It's basically just the director of the course and having that so we can maintain that distance from all the other members that actually use the course. And then masks also need to be worn by players and coaches. Again, it can be taken off if you're 10 feet away from one another. Soccer, seen as a moderate-risk sport. Again, a lot of changes in the rules. No throw-ins, no head balls, no intentional body contact with anyone. That includes shoulder-to-shoulder, backing into one another, or any other unintentional body contact. It's also, you're not allowed to have goal kicks, drop kicks, punts, or throws by the goalie in the air beyond the midfield line. So everything needs to be touching the ground before it gets to the other side of the field. And again, masks need to be worn, and you can take that mask break that we spoke about in the slides before. Volleyball, as Dr. Morris said, this is our only sport we do have in the fall indoors. And some of the modifications change the sport up a little bit. One, the balls do need to be cleaned after each rally and sanitized. The front row players aren't going to have that traditional tack and blocking game they normally have because they're going to be three feet away from the net, creating a six-foot distance total between team and team to create that social distancing. And masks also need to be worn at all times. And you can take that mask break, but it's definitely harder in that indoor area than it is in the outdoor area to take that break. We spoke briefly about neighboring schools, but these are just some bullet points of what schools have been doing around us. The PVIC, the conference that we belong to, put together a survey, and some of them are doing full participation and moved football to floating, which you have to do if you choose to do so. And then no fall sports at all and moved them all to floating season. Some just moved soccer and girls' volleyball to floating season as well as football. And then some are just unsure, they're still waiting to have their school committee meetings as well. And again, during these times, there are pros and cons to having sports. So I'm going to start with the pros. You know, the overall health of the student athletes, the social, the emotional, mental, the physical health, not having sports since March 2020, it's been a long time. And when I say sports, I'm talking about high school sports. I may be biased, and I played for Amherst High School, but there's just something special about playing for a community, playing for Amherst and having that across your chest, playing, you know, with some of your teammates, some of your friends and colleagues from elementary school, and then being competitive with high school sports is really nothing like it. Also, just the decrease of screen time. We are going to be starting remote, so having, you know, a different atmosphere for the kids to be in is definitely big. And again, I do think, even though there's some, you know, mixed feelings about the floating season, it is a positive, at least if we choose not to, if you guys don't choose to let us have fall sports, we can move it to the floating season. So that is a positive. Some of the cons and concerns are just, as I said before, kind of the indoor sport volleyball, just inability to social distance indoors, it's much more difficult than outdoors. The spread and the potential spread, I should say, of COVID-19 within our community. I'm not just concerned about the, you know, student athletes and the coaches, just also who the student and athletes' coaches go home to every day. We just have to keep that in mind. And transportation, I'm not really speaking about extra transportation that's probably needed for the games, you know, having to split up both cross-country teams, et cetera. I'm more so speaking about the whole equity issue of kids getting to practices. I know we have some volunteers in the community, which I love. However, we just have to keep that aware, you know, in the back of our minds that some people's transportation to practice was that 7:15, you know, AM bus ride to school, them staying after, doing their homework, and then going right to practice. And then lastly, the use of a public facility, so golf. We don't have much control on what goes on at Amherst Golf versus we do have more control of what goes on in our fields, in our gym as well. And these are just the slides that I used. You guys can look at these sources too for further detail. If there's any other questions, feel free.
Mr. Dumling?
Yes, so thank you very much for the presentation. It's great to have a hurricane at the helm of our athletics department. So thank you for this information. I'm glad that we don't have to vote tonight because I, well, I am very much on board with all the pros that you've listed, and all the pros, by the way, that parents and public and coaches have sent in to us recently about the pros of sports, the physical, mental, emotional benefits, especially for our kids who, based on our current phasing model, aren't going to be in the buildings until November. I think for me, this is just a general comment, like the pros are pretty well-established. But like everything in COVID for the school committee, nothing is easy here. And I think you've already hit on a couple of the major concerns that I think we need to, as much as we can, come up with what's the best solution to solve. And I don't think a lot of these cons are completely solvable. But I think with the limited amount of time we have, we need to get it as good as we can. So the transportation inequity is a big one, right? There's no way around it, that we're not going to be running buses in the early afternoon and the very late afternoon, before and after practices and games. And so kids are going to have to have their own transportation. And so this is going to exclude families and students that cannot find their own transportation. That might be a small number of students, and I'm sure that parents and volunteers among those teams are going to do their best to support each other and, you know, carpool and socially-distanced roll-down-the-windees kind of way. And, you know, I hope that that happens. But I think we do need to think about, are there ways that we can help informally organize that in a safe way, right? And that's a way that we can encourage that. So that's like number one on my list of concerns. Number two, and I don't think this is solvable, and I just have to say this publicly because I feel like a big part of transparency as a public official is being honest. The juxtaposition for the first two weeks of school, so from mid-September to October 1st, of having kids playing sports, which is a very valuable, positive thing, and yet having a certain subset of our students, our high-need students who we know can't access remote learning, unable to access in-person learning for those first two weeks of school until 10-1, it feels that, it's very hard. It's a hard juxtaposition for me to hold. I don't think there's a way to solve that. I know it's only two weeks, these kids are getting back in on 10-1. And maybe we'll talk a little bit more about what those kids can get in those two weeks, you know, later on in the meeting. But I just have to state it out there that that's a hard thing. I don't think it's a reason not to move forward with sports, but it is something that sits on top of my mind. The volleyball thing, I think, is very well-stated. I read through all the sport-by-sport guidance. That's definitely the one that stands out like a sore thumb. The fact that the state doesn't classify it as high-risk, I think is a mistake, given that it's the only indoor sport. And that they really don't say anything about what else you should be doing, given that it's indoor, is concerning to me. So I would want to hear more from public health officials and from Dr. Morris and our own, you know, resources about what the guidance is on that. I'm not surprised that other local health officials have advised against that. And then the other detail that stood out to me that I guess that has come up in another topic on school committees is the idea of gaiters, right? So gaiters being these thinner masks. And throughout the MIA guidance, it says, you know, gaiters are acceptable. And I get that. If you are a young person and you are running around at top cardio output, you want a thin layer because it's pretty uncomfortable to engage in a high activity. And yet, there's this other idea, right? That if we're trying to maximize safety and you're turning the dials down and some of the other variables, like you're going to be frequently violating the social distancing and you are involved in very heavy input and output cardio activity, you might want to consider turning the dial up on some of the other safety guidelines, like the mask requirement. So I found that kind of a concerning detail in terms of safety. um, I found that kind of a concerning detail in terms of safety. So, um, the special ed juxtaposition, I don't think there's anything we can do to solve that. I think that's just uh, uh, what's the other concerns that I brought up? If there's some details that we come, come back next week, whether it's Dr. Morris of Wisconsin, you know, uh, um, I'd be interested, uh, before. But that being said, at this moment, my current disposition is to vote in favor of everything except for volleyball. But I'm open to changing my mind and I, I am interested to hear what, what everyone else has to say on this, this week and next.
Mister, uh, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'll say is, uh, I want to emphasize something Ms. Stewart said, uh, about, uh, golf. And we have been in touch with Ms. Consolino about that and, and she actually has talked to us a bit about volleyball and the concerns around that. But I think the golf piece that Ms. Stewart said is this, it's on a public course. Uh, the public course wouldn't have the same rules for everyone on the public course as it has for our student athletes. So that is, um, while, while it's low risk in the overall context, it is a real concern for us about how many people are playing golf. Um, and that they don't have the same rules as our student athletes have. So I think out of the two sports and Ms. Stewart can correct me if I'm wrong, but those are the two that stand out to us, that there's a variable um, that's different than the others, you know? Uh, I'm not saying that, you know, soccer's not medium risk, but it's on our field. We can control who's there. And I think that's the piece around the golf that makes us, you know, a bit anxious. Um, is that, uh, there's variables we can't control. It's not our golf course. And, um, so that's just another one to Mr. Demling's point about, you know, um, kind of where we feel more comfortable and where we feel less comfortable. Mr. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I agree for sure.
Ms. Spitzer, I think I saw your hand up earlier.
Yep. No, I, thank you. Um, I guess one of my questions had to also go back to the volleyball, um, issue and, um, I was curious also about the sports where we might be training in, say, the locker rooms or the gym. I mean, all of these spaces, I don't think, um, you know, we've been paying really close attention to ventilation in our classrooms, restricting, you know, students to being only in places with windows and proper ventilation. So it's been a long time since I've been in, you know, the, the high school gym or locker rooms. I'm just curious if were those part of the ventilation study that we're going to be seeing in a little bit, or have we looked at the ventilation in the spaces that would be required for opening, um, up to volleyball and also to the other sports that might require kids to, um, be in the building?
So I think I can take that one, Ms. Stewart, um, which is those were, those spaces were not tested. Um, and I think the general theme that I've heard from other superintendents, with the exception of perhaps volleyball, but for outdoor sports is to use those spaces sparingly. Um, because the students aren't coming from school. The idea is that they would come ready to play. Um, and they would, you know, perhaps use bathrooms, uh, which we would expect. But that it wouldn't be the typical locker room experience the student athletes have had before that they would, you know, let's say for field hockey, they would come, they'd go straight to the field, um, dressed, ready to play. Um, and they would go back in their cars and go home. They wouldn't come in for changing or, you know, any of that kind of thing, uh, given the context. Um, so really the only use would be bathrooms, but not locker rooms. Volleyball is the one piece where it gets a little more complicated. Students can still show up, uh, ready to play, but because it is indoors, it, it adds a variable that I think, um, you know, in talking to the health folks, there are some concerns about. We have not gotten a directive not to play volleyball from our health department, but um, there's some, uh, feelings, um, that it, um, the nature of being inside adds a layer of risk that's not present in the other sports.
And I just want to add to, um, the indoor space, our trainers also indoors. Um, however, at our athletic director meeting today, we spoke about even maybe putting like an outdoor tent for our trainer to be out there outside to limit the amount of time people are indoors as well. So that's just something that people are doing too.
Um, Ms. Denser?
Um, have you had any conversation yet with the people at the Amherst Golf Course to understand what their current rules are? And whether members would be on the course at the same time as the Amherst players?
Yes, I have been in conversation, um, with them and volunteers that work there as well. Um, and people will definitely be on the course. They actually have had an increase of members, um, join the course this year, which is great for them, but it's also, um, a little bit of a bummer because they don't clear the course for us to practice and have games and matches.
I have, um, a couple of questions and some comments also. Um, so I, I guess first, first my quick questions on the, um, we, because we're, we're, we have to, we, the school committee has to vote on, on the season because we're starting the year remote. Would that, does that, are we voting on the fall season only? Or are we voting on all sports? Um, are we? If, if we have to sometime, sometime between now and when we, when we get to the winter season, if we've had the presumably we're in, in-person learning and then we close, would we then have to also vote on winter sports? Or if we're in-person learning by then, we don't actually vote on winter sports? I guess like, what are we actually voting on and what is the decision process for beyond fall sports?
So as of right now, you guys would be just going on about fall sports. None of the modifications or rules are out for the winter sports and the other sports to follow. Other than we'll have football in the floating season. That's the only thing that would stay the same. Um, that you guys can't really change.
Got it. Thank you. Um, so I did, there's some, some other thoughts and, and just talking about sort of the use of, of locker rooms. My, both of my kids have been participating in different sports throughout the summer and, and, um, club sports and, you know, even with the pool, they, they have to walk, go to the pool in their bathing suits. They're not allowed in the locker rooms and um, so for a lot of the young athletes, I, I think they're, they're used to this idea. I mean, even the hockey player, you know, going to the, the rink in full gear and, you know, changing in the parking lot. I mean, right now it's August. In, in January, that might be challenging, but it is very common and, and you know, the kids, because they, they want to play their sport, it, it works pretty well. They, they sort of do what they need to do to, to be able to play. Um, but I, I will echo and sort of build on Mr. Demling's comments and concerns about how it, 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 it just doesn't sit well, um, from a school committee perspective that we are, um, you know, presumably voting on sports and, you know, if we were to say yes to, to a fall season, that we're we're at the same time leaving our high need students or, or high need students sort of not having any in-person learning until at the earliest October first. And that just really is, is challenging to sort of accept. And again, I, I, I agree with Mr. Demling and what some of the community has said in public comment that that's not necessarily a reason to say no to sports because of the many, many reasons, um, that you cited, Ms. Stewart, for all the, all the, all the obvious pros and benefits of, of participation in sports. Um, but it's really, really hard to sort of, you know, think about letting down sort of our most vulnerable students, um, in, in that sense, um, at the same time that we're doing this and, and and to take that transparency and honesty further, as, as one community member noted in their public comment, the difference here is is not a difference in the school committee, but a difference in sort of the stakeholders that are involved in, in making it happen. And we don't have a union, um, that we, that we're dealing with when we're talking about sports. Um, and that's, that's not a statement of positive or negative. That's just a, simply a statement of sort of how, how we're able to consider um, even consider sports at this point. Um, and I, I do have concerns about the transportation equity. I do, having had kids that participated in high school sports and seeing sort of that camaraderie and the, the parent support of all of the other athletes, I, I, I do feel that if it's, if we make a, if the teams and the coaches can make that effort to, to coordinate the, the transportation, that will be able to happen. So I would just hope that we, we commit to making sure that we're not leaving students out because of, um, transportation. And one, one thought that I did have though, um, because of the challenge, be- because so many of these sports that we're looking at for fall are outdoors and are lower risk, um, is there opportunity for us to expand participation in some way? Um, I know we have reduced, reduced, um, fees for certain sports, um, with reduced and, um, free and reduced lunch, um, families. And we have discounts for um, multiple children that are in one family that are playing sports. And I wonder if we can sort of build on that a little bit to enable greater participation in sports so that more students are able to get the benefits, um, of these and expanding what we think about and at least for the, you know, that level one of play, which is the, the conditioning and the, the, the gameplay that, all of the things that sort of team building, um, if we can sort of make that more accessible to more students, um, for, just for all of the benefits that you've cited. Um, so I guess that's sort of a commendable question. Um, I don't know if you've given that any thought, but that's, um, one hope. And before you answer that, um, my last thought is on the gaiters. Um, I think, you know, uh, Mr. Demling cited the single layer. I have seen, um, multiple layers and one of the, the other comment, one of my kids' sports actually bought gaiters for all of their students because they have to, all of their players, because they have to wear the, the gaiters on, um, on the ice. So having, you know, hurricane gaiters that are multiple layers and providing them to all the team, all of the players on, on different teams might be, might be a way to to enable that and then also help in, help enforce, um, the, that sort of protocol. Um, but back to the question about the expanding participation, do we, have you given any thoughts to particularly for some of the sports like a cross-country or, um, or soccer that might require less, less equipment? Um, and less sort of training, um, you know, if, if they're new to the sport in high school or middle school, um, are there ways that we can build on that?
Yeah, and I, we typically have strength and conditioning in the fall. I just didn't put these on the, that on the slide because that's not an MIA sport. Um, even though that's indoors, we could maybe make some type of like outdoor workout type of thing for students also to participate in. Um, they are allowing out of season coaching. I think that was mostly for, you know, all the football players that aren't going to have a season this fall, um, to allow their coach to do some sort of, you know, conditioning or, um, you know, whatever kind of drills that he's able to put in, um, that fit all the guidelines and do that and have that opportunity. Uh, but we normally do have like a strength and conditioning and be, maybe like looking for something that's not indoors in that, you know, in the weight room. Maybe, you know, using the hills and putting equipment outside, that could be an idea as well. But normally we do have a lot of, um, boys soccer. We normally have over, you know, it's about sixty people try out, sixty boys try out, you know, our girl soccer team, we have two teams as well. And our cross-country, there's a good turnout normally for them. So I wouldn't be surprised if more people would join. Maybe even some football players that don't actually have a season will try a sport out as well.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Demling, for, um, talking about the inequities. Cause I, you know, the transportation is one of my big ones being out here in Chutesbury. And also the, you know, starting sports and not have any students in the school is a big tough, as everyone's mentioned, is a tough issue. And, um, you answered my question. I was going to ask about football. If they'd be allowed to do some sort of training in the, the fall non-season and you, you answered that one. And yeah, um, more middle school and, you know, intramurals. We, I mean, we really should look into doing that because, you know, the soccer is more, the sports are for high school students. And we really should encourage as many middle school students to get outside and play as we can. Um, let's see the, oh, my other, my volleyball question. If we were to give the thumbs up to volleyball and find out that we're the only school at once to do it in the fall, would we have to re-vote or would that, could that just get moved to the floating season?
Um, that could just get moved to the floating season, but as, um, you know, like I said before, I had my athletic director meeting this morning. And it's almost like fifty fifty, to be honest with you. However, like some people that are actually in our league, um, they are already moving to the floating season versus like Long Meadow, their go for volleyball. Um, some schools are just a go. So it's, that's actually like a sport that's split, but there's enough, if we had to go to the floating season, we would have enough people to play. Um, as well as if we stayed, um, during the season as well.
Ms. Seeger?
So in, in thinking about this, um, transportation for me is probably the highest concern that I have in this, especially coming from Leverett as well, where, um, like in Chutesbury, the kids are coming from probably a further distance. Um, I, I'm also thinking about the different forces at play between the inequity of not having anybody in the schools and then having sports happening. And to, and in my mind, there there's just very different forces at play there. Um, and with the students playing sports, you know, we hear more and more about the mental health concerns we have with families having their children at home all the time and not seeing people. And, um, you know, I watch my own kids. Are they getting outside enough? Are they exercising enough and stuff like that? So, you know, I'm concerned too that if, because there aren't, because we're not having, um, students in school that we decide not to have sports, I, I don't think that's, um, going to be helpful. You know, it is a concern. It is, it is a sort of oddity when you look at it and you say, well, you're not having anybody in the school, but you're having sports. But I really do feel like there's going to be so much benefit to having the students, um, playing sports that, that we really should consider allowing that to happen. The bigger thing for me is the transportation and how do you make it fair? Um, so that those who want to play can actually get there. And I love the idea of expanding it to um, a bigger group of kids who might maybe not normally do this or, um, just opening it up more. Um, so I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I just briefly wanted to second what Ms. McDonald, Ms. Seeger, um, both, both said about ex- the expansion. This idea that like, ki- like kids that, like, uh, uh, maybe like the lowest bar activity, I, I guess cross, I ran cross-country, so I'm not saying it's a non-skill sport, but, but the, but like the lowest sort of a bar activity, whether that's like soccer or, or ultimate or some kind of like activity where a kid might not normally do sports, but if they've been cooped up for six months. And then we have this, this accessible, uh, activity, um, uh, where they might not, you know, they might not make the, you know, the, a high school grade soccer team or, or, or some other thing, but the, the, there's something, some intramural level, um, that, you know, that maybe that's something that, that, that would be accessible for a couple of months. I, it's, I, 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 I do also do understand though, the challenge with, with creative ideas that are given really late and the implementation challenges with, with solving those. So it's very easy to throw these off the cuff and then say, here you go, Victoria. Like have fun implementing that for the next few weeks. So, um, you know, um, it devils into details, obviously, and I understand the pragmatic challenges, but, um, uh, you know, I just wanted to say, I think that's a great, great idea.
Ms. Spitzer, is your hand up?
Yep. So kind of, um, I just want to, I, I kind of led in with my ventilation question and didn't get a chance to kind of weigh in on, on my thoughts, but I, I had some um, comments as well. And one is that I, I totally agree that the mental health benefits from being able to exercise and also have a social connection with your peers is really important. I guess as somebody who, you know, in high school was not much of an athlete at all, I, it's not only the inequity I see against like the have, the schools closed and the transportation issues, but there are also kids who, that the thing they get excited about, the thing that motivates them might be, you know, I, I was on debate team, you know, like, like it wasn't athletic, but it was a social activity. I went to, it happened after school and it gave me something to get excited about, um, as a kid. So I know we're not going to decide on that now, but the other thing that makes me feel kind of uncomfortable, like I, there, there are health reasons we can't do a lot of the dramatic arts and, um, and singing and, you know, the chorus and, and, and other after-school activities. But I want us to be aware that there are a lot of after-school activities that potentially could be moved outdoors and modified in other low-risk ways. And all of these other challenges around transportation and equity that we're talking about are, are also present for these ones. So I guess if we make a vote on this one, I just want to make sure we don't forget all the kids who their reason to get excited to go to school is an after-school club that doesn't involve athletics. So as much as I want to open up athletics to as many people as possible, because I, I really believe now I've become a bit of an athlete, like it helps my mental health a lot. Um, but I don't think it's the only thing that, that, and some kids are just not able to participate in sports for physical, you know, reasons that I think we all need to, to be aware of too. It's not just the economic, there are other, um, inequities. Um, so after saying all of that, I, I have a question about, um, you know, when I'm often LSSE, um, has intramural sports and often they're using our, sorry, um, um, anyways, so, um, other, other things that are happening at, through LSSE, I know have been put on hold, like the pools are open, but some of the other, so I'm wondering are is that still the case that high school students could be playing like soccer or, um, intramural softball, for example? I remember when I was a kid. um, intramural softball, for example? I remember when I was a kid, that was an option. Um, will that be an option? And will we be allowing other, like, non-school members to be on our fields? Or has that, um, not been decided yet?
Um, I can, I don't know if Dr. Morris, you want to speak on it, but I can speak on it a little bit. As of right now, there's no one using our fields, um, that we have, which are the ones, I know they're separated, so that makes it a little complicated when people drive by the high school and see people on the football and baseball field and softball field. Those aren't our fields. Um, they shouldn't be on our fields right now, I guess I should say, but there's nothing blocking them from going on to our fields. Um, and, but yeah, there are, you know, baseball leagues and other leagues happening that LSE is running still, but as of right now, they shouldn't be using our, um, facilities. Like there's no indoor basketball or anything that they normally use as well.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll add is that, yeah, there are, I, I, the town hasn't informed us that they are, they have approved certain youth leagues to use the town-owned fields, uh, particularly the ones that Ms. Stewart said, um, but not on, uh, the fields that are on the region. Region-owned land, excuse me. Yep.
Any other comments, um, thoughts or questions?
I just want to state, I heard you guys talk about gators a little bit. That's also another thing that came up today, um, in my meeting, and some schools have ordered not to allow gators. That's also another option. If you guys don't feel comfortable with gators, you can just tell student athletes that they can't wear gators and they have to wear masks. Um, I don't think they would mind having to do that, if that was the case. Because we can always make, you know, our rules higher than the MIA, like our grades and our academic rules. You know, we have higher expectations than, than the MIA, but we do at least have to meet their guidelines at least.
Okay, thank you.
So as, um, Dr. Morris said, um, we're, we're not, not expecting or, um, uh, planning to take a vote tonight. So, um, we will come back again, and if there's other questions, we can do that. But if you, uh, I'll, I'll give everybody one last shot to ask a question while we have Ms. Stewart here. Um, if anybody has any more questions. Not seeing any. Okay.
All right, thanks.
Nice. Thank you so much.
All right, bye.
Bye. Okay. Um, so moving back to item one on our agenda, which is, uh, so I'm now going to, um, move that we enter into executive session to discuss, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA, UFCW, APAA, and AFSCME, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair also declares, I declare, with the intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Lord, second.
Moved by McDonald, uh, second by Lauren. We'll take a roll call vote on this. Uh, Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Answer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So we will now, uh, move into executive. I'll call to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee at eight fifteen PM, and we'll start with a roll call, um, attendance. Um, um, oh, Mr. Demling.
Hi.
Um,
Hi.
Present? Are you present?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. The Amherst School Committee is to order. Chair Hall?
All right, seeing the presence of the quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee at eight sixteen PM, and I'll start with roll call attendance. Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, present.
Ms. Stanser.
Answer, present.
Mr. Menino.
Menino, present.
Ms. Barlow.
Barlow, present.
And Hall, present.
So, um, we are starting with, um, approving our minutes from, we have minutes from August sixth in our packet, but not the other dates. So we'll, we'll at least, uh, work through August sixth. Kenny, welcome, um, Ms. Gribko. Ms. Stanser.
Um, a couple of, I think, just, uh, typos probably in, um, in, in item number six, the last paragraph, it says the plan were voting. I think it should be the plan we were voting or are voting, the plan we are voting. And in number nine A, the first paragraph, last line, I think the word grave should be grade. And I think, and, uh, Ms. Hall, can correct me if I'm wrong, and number nine B, um, paragraph four, the second sentence, it says calling the ARPS committee to order. I think that should be the Pelham Committee.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, so thanks, Ms. Stanser. Yeah, it does, it says that I, that I moved, uh, made the motion on behalf of the region, and it references Mr. Sullivan. Um, and then on the following page, it says that I moved to extend the meeting. So those, that just needs to be cleaned up to reference that it was Pelham, and I did not move to extend the meeting, because we don't have to.
Mr. Demling, and then Ms. Kenny.
On, uh, item nine A, page six, top paragraph, uh, the sentence in the middle, "Mr. Demling agreed that the data is murky and that the major limitation of the survey is that we do not know why people chose the option they did." Um, I went back and looked at the tape. Um, and basically, uh, what I said was, "Mr. Demling agreed that, uh, Mr. Demling, uh, actually, sorry, I'm going to have to go to what I said." Um, uh, "I might not agree that the data is completely murky. I do feel like there's a general trend towards support for Model Two, however, um, that's, to make this simple, the change that I would, that would still, would make the minutes accurate without adding more, would just be to change this to, "Mr. Demling agreed that a major limitation of the survey is that we don't know why people choose the option they did." So just changing, um, striking the, the data is murky and the, uh, just to A. So the, the new sentence, "Mr. Demling agreed that a major limitation of the survey is that we don't know." Is that clear? Sorry if that was confusing.
Ms. Kenny.
I was there. I was in attendance. So I'm not listening to the sounds. Um, and then I, all right, I hold on. Think maybe that was it that I saw for myself.
Okay, Mr. Harrington.
Yes, so, um, in section nine B, towards the end of, uh, the fourth paragraph, it says, "Mr. Harrington said on page sixteen, if we could add language around by enforcing health measures." I think I asked if we could add language enforce, or around enforcing health measures. I think that'd be the more X.
Ms. Kenny.
Um, hmm, when Mr. Harrington asked, I thought if you, you, he asked about restorative justice. I didn't go back and look at the tapes, but I thought that's what we had talked about. Maybe it wasn't the same day.
Right, right, as, as opposed to having like punitive measures, right.
Any other, um, updates, changes, corrections? Seeing none. Um, so I, I will move for the region to approve the minutes from, of our, uh, joint meeting on Thursday, August sixth. Is there a second from the region?
I'll second, Spitzer.
We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye, sorry.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Answer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
McDonald, aye. Motion passes, uh, nine to zero. Would someone like to make a motion for Amherst? I'm moved to approve the minutes of August sixth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved by Spitzer, second by Harrington. Roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Um, Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Oh, did you hear me, Lord, aye?
Yes, we did, sorry. And Harrington, aye. And Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Um, motion passes five to zero. Dr. Morris, could you remind us in chat how we, um, what the key controls are for unmuting ourselves? Thank you. Chair Hall?
Um, I will make a motion for Pelham to adopt, to approve the minutes of August sixth, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stanser. Uh, okay, roll call vote. Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
And Stanser.
And Stanser, aye.
Ms. Barlow.
Barlow, aye.
Mr. Menino.
Menino, aye.
And Hall, aye.
Okay. Um, now we move on to, um, public comment, and we have, um, two voice messages and, um, some written comment as well. And for those that, um, hadn't tuned in for the regional school committee, um, public comment, um, I did not get this, um, over to the, um, Sasha in order to get it posted to the website before the meeting, but for those that would like to, um, read on their own, um, I did post it on my school committee Facebook page, um, if you would like to access the actual, um, public comment document. Can we start with the voice message? Um, Mr. Menino, can you mute yourself, please?
Oh, you are.
I'm Heather Sheldon, speaking on behalf of the Board of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. The joint statement between the district and APEA announcing the two-week delay to the start of in-person learning stated, "We have agreed, we have agreed on some broad parameters that we believe will make distance learning more meaningful for all children in the district. While CTEC agrees that distance learning can be made more meaningful for many of our students, it is flatly false to claim that distance learning can be meaningful for all children in the district. On Monday, CTEC sent a survey to all students in our district with an individualized education plan, or IEP. We have had over seventy responses so far. We, we are encouraged to hear that many families report that since in-person instruction ceased last March, their students have re, have maintained or even gained skills. Sadly, though, this is not a uniform condition. A significant portion of families report that their student has lost important skills. Some families reported that their student is in crisis. Please remember these families as you continue to make plans for the school year. We will share full resort, we will share full results from the survey with you after we have fully compiled them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Gray, and I'm giving a comment about the remote learning. Uh, I have a student son who's in tenth grade, and I was very concerned last spring that there was no synchronous classes. We were all told that there would be regular synchronous classes this fall, and I read that part of the union bargaining demands had initially said that they would not be providing synchronous instruction. This really, really concerns me. I, I know other states where kids have, even in the last spring, were doing nine-to-twelve regular Zoom classes on a daily basis, meeting with all their teachers, and we should be able to do this. We have an excellent school system, and yet we've really fallen short for our children. I would still like to hear what the plan is for remote learning. I understand there are blocks designated, but I'd like to know, are there going to be synchronous classes with each teacher each day for each block? I think this is what our kids need, and it was sorely absent last spring, and we were promised that's what would be happening for the fall. Um, I have listened to the town halls, we've been, I've been reading the materials, but I so far haven't heard any commitment that there will be synchronous classes with each teacher each day, and I really hope that will be happening. Thank you.
Can folks see that document on the screen now?
Yes.
This is, um, this comment is just the transcript of the, um, voice message that we heard. And as mentioned, is included in the, in the document that will be posted on, um, the Regional School Committee Agenda's webpage on the ARPS.org website. So that concludes, um, public comment. Um, so we'll move, uh, turn it over to Dr. Morris for the superintendent's update at this point.
Sure. So it'll be brief because most of my updates fall under the Fall 2020, uh, agenda item, but I have four. Um, and all of them, nice news. So nice to have nice updates. So the first one and, and most prevalent because it's a topic that this committee, these committees have talked about recently is, um, a couple of days ago, I guess it was Monday, we got a, an email, um, that the, uh, United States Food, um, Agriculture, um, Department has extended the food waivers so that we can extend our food sites within the community through December 31st. So, you know, as you know, we've built alternate plans of how to manage that, but we're glad not to need them, that we can continue uh, doing what we've been doing. That's been very effective of getting meals to families through, uh, the rest of this calendar year. So, you know, I want to thank, it's a couple of you were involved in that advocacy. So thank you for getting involved in it. And I'm glad that we're, uh, we're in a better place with that, um, not needing to adjust our other programming. Second is that this week, as you know, staff were, um, uh, invited to be in buildings to do the professional development. They have not required, but it's been great. I've been to three different buildings and uh, been able to see staff and again, and obviously the safe socially distanced way, say hi to people and, and have conversations. And, uh, you know, it feels better to have our school buildings with teachers in it and paraeducators and other folks. Uh, it's been great hanging out with custodians and, and other administrators for the last couple of months who have been in, but it feels really nice to have, uh, other folks occupying some spaces in the building. So, and that's been great. Obviously staff have been, um, also able to access it from home, but for some staff, you know, being away from home has been a really positive thing. Just, you know, people are home a lot these days. Uh, but also accessing the technology and the wifi and, and, and all those pieces. The third thing is yesterday, as you know, was primary day and, uh, for the Amherst folks, um, and the regional folks too, our spaces were used. I got to visit Crocker Farm as well as the high schools voting area. I got to talk to constables, uh, walk around with, um, you know, principal at Crocker Farm. Incredibly smooth. I want to thank the town. It was, it was incredibly well-staffed. Um, I'm really glad at Crocker Farm where it moved to. It's just a much better site all around. It's much less, even if it was a day where students were there sometime in the future, and obviously not now. It just, it's much less getting in the way. Um, so kicking ourselves for having never changed that, um, site, uh, earlier, but uh, really want to thank the town and thank voters for following it. The signage worked, you know, there weren't too many people. There was no one wandering, but there aren't too many people confused by it and, and the town did a fantastic job. So, uh, thanks everyone for that. It went, um, better than I would have, um, would have thought it would in terms of clarity, given that there were new sites, both the high school being a new site altogether, but also Crocker Farm being in a different location at the opposite side of the building. And my last one is that we had new teacher orientation last week. Um, uh, it was great to meet them. It was a smaller group of new teachers than we've had in some time. Um, but it really, you know, great to meet them and we'll share kind of data in the fall about, you know, HR and diversity, um, that we're, we'll be proud to share, but also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and other folks who donated goodie bags. Um, as they always did, this year was harder to do, but they got a lot of donations that our new, new teachers got welcomed into not just the district, but to the larger community and, and kudos to Tim Sheehan for organizing, uh, some really valuable experiences for those new folks when they come. So, we're glad to have them. They're going to add a tremendous amount to our district. And again, I have lots more updates, but they'll be, uh, they'll, they'll go in the Fall 2020, uh, attendee bucket a little later tonight.
Great. Any questions, uh, or comments for Dr. Morris? Mr. Sullivan?
Question about the food distribution. Without the UMass students being on campus, does that mean the baby Burke is gonna continue to help?
At least temporarily, we're working on what that means. There are students on campus, just significantly fewer, um, in terms of UMass. And so we are trying to work out those details. Um, but, um, you know, we're just happy that, uh, we got that news Monday and now we're, you know, Mr. Gallo Conno, you met last time, is working out those kinds of details, but UMass has contributed, uh, committed to helping as much as they can, given that they have reduced capacity, as you noted.
Ms. Stanser?
Um, so what about the funding? Um, is that going to be the money that the town said they would provide for those meals?
So since, since that waiver got extended, it'll be like this spring where we get reimbursed per meal without having to do the long verification process or charge people meals. It's like our summer meals program. So it'll, it'll, it'll continue like it did in the spring, which financially worked out okay for us.
And I'm, I'm sorry, but did that, who actually funded the meals?
So the government does. They reimburse us for the meals as part of the food juice lunch program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't more clear about that before. My mistake.
Any more questions? Okay, okay. We'll move on to, um, chair's update. Um, I, I don't have an update other than I, um, wanted to just say, um, uh, thank you and, um, for everybody who stepped in last week to help out when, um, I had such poor wifi. And also, um, to note that I was in error. I had actually received an email from Ms. Seeger stating that she had a conflict on that night. So I apologize for Ms. Seeger for saying that actually I did not know that anybody, uh, uh, could not come. So, um, apologies for that. Um, Chair Hall, do you have any, um, updates?
I don't, thank you.
Does, um, are there any announcements for, oh, uh, Ms. Lord?
Yes, thank you, Chair McDonald. I would like gladly and triumphantly announce our School Equity Task Force meeting next Wednesday at 6:00 AM. Welcome all, thank you. Oh, 6:00 PM, thank you all.
Mr. Demling?
Yes, and we have our first, uh, CPAC meeting of the school year, uh, this Friday, September 4th at 9:00 AM. Uh, so CPAC, Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, it's open to everyone in the public, uh, but, uh, here for, uh, parents of students with disabilities, kids on IEP, or if you have concerns. Um, so easiest way to get that link is just email CPAC at C P A C at ARPS.org. You can also find ARP CPAC on Facebook, uh, and, uh, be happy to help you out. And, um, there you go.
Ms. Spitzer?
This is more of a specific to the Amherst committee, but there is a JCP, JCPC meeting, um, coming up on Wednesday that Mr. Demling and I will be attending and looking forward to giving you updates on, um, the next meeting. And that's, sorry, that's at Wednesday at 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you. And I'll make one more announcement. Um, uh, there is a virtual community forum tomorrow sponsored by the Town Gown Fall Reopening Group. Um, that is tomorrow at 5:30 PM online. Um, folks from the, um, it's been shared a lot on Facebook, um, but just calling that out. Um, I think the deadline to submit questions ahead of time is past, um, but that will also be streamed, I believe, on YouTube Live. Any other announcements? No? Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to our new and continuing business and, um, we'll begin with the Fall 2020 update. Um, so for that, I will hand it back over to Dr. Morris.
Um, sure. I've got a, a number of, uh, things to share. It's not a presentation like a, you know, in terms of slides, but a variety of topics. Um, so I will start with virtual schedules. Um, so we are finalizing those. Um, I think to, to answer some questions that we've got, not just tonight, but in other meetings, there will be synchronous meetings every day, uh, for every student. Uh, we believe in that and some of that, you know, we're still gathering staff feedbacks. Uh, next, early next week, we should have that all wrapped up. Um, so there's more clarity coming, but we believe in daily synchronous instruction in core content areas. Uh, we've been doing professional development with, um, an online school, actually a non-for-profit school. And, um, they've been great about helping us think about what needs to be synchronous, what needs to be asynchronous and, and really re-envisioning what distance learning means, uh, what we know from them and from research is, uh, trying to replace the in-person experience with the online experience, like one for one. It's a really different format and that doesn't make a tremendous, uh, amount of impact as we'd want. And synchronous instruction is, is incredibly important. Um, uh, you know, for instance, you know, one of the things that I shared on, on one of the PD sessions I was a part of today is we know that not all caregiver, or not all parents and caregivers, primary caregivers will be with their child at home, um, the whole time. That, you know, I think some of the concerns about screen time for me, it's, it's not necessarily how much screen time, it's which screens are students watching? Are they watching the screens with their teacher? Um, or working with other students? Or are they watching the screens on their television? Because, you know, it's, as opposed to, uh, the spring, there's going to be a lot more parents and guardians who are going to be needing to work than frankly, in, not necessarily in the home, but even those who are in the home. So we really do need to rely on our staff members to be providing that instruction instead of providing resources. You know, it's just some national statistics because I think they're important from an equity approach is, um, our former Secretary of Education, John King cited these recently. Um, there are huge disparities, uh, racial disparities on who can choose to work or who has the capacity to work from home versus who has to show up in buildings. Um, so 20%, only 20% of African Americans in the workforce in this country can work from home. Only 17% of Latinos in the workforce can work from home in the United States. And for white families, it's incredibly higher number. And so, you know, we do, we know that, uh, for many families of every race, but, but again, there's those disparities. It may be cousins, it may be older siblings who are, uh, you know, providing childcare for younger kids. And so we really need to, uh, need to provide that high quality instruction that we do, that, that we're planning to. And, and again, at the elementary level in particular, trying to focus down on small groups because that's how students learn best. But even at the middle school, high school level, uh, what we've learned is that's really critical. Um, you know, it's interesting looking at some other states. So Maryland's like mandating live instructional hours and what you notice is actually, uh, maybe, uh, the opposite of what you think might be true, that a lot of places who are doing that are having more live instruction for elementary students than secondary students. And while that sounds counterintuitive, at the secondary level, there can be a small class session, students do work and they may be working in groups without a teacher because they're, they're able to be more independent, whereas at the elementary level, again, that's a little bit harder. Um, so we're actively working on it. And, and another reason we feel so strongly about having a sufficient amount of synchronous instruction is that learning, we believe is a, and I think there's enough research on it, is, is, is a collaborative exercise that, you know, that it's learning one-on-one versus learning in a group offers a substantially different experience. And what we found out from students last spring is they were missing that personal connection. If you remember the, there was a survey given in the student piece. Uh, everyone believed there was more, all three groups, stakeholder groups, talked about needing to have more synchronous instruction. But the students in particular talked about it really increasing their motivation. Um, and so we're going to provide that for them and promote the personal connections and relationships that students won't have with their teachers like they did last spring because they haven't met them before. Um, they don't have six months of experience. So we are going to try to balance those. We want to make sure that we're providing um, sufficient resources for families. We'll be doing more parent trainings, um, on the different, you know, technology tools. That'll start next week uh, and be ongoing. But we also want to make sure that we're providing, uh, real instruction for students because we know that we want to, um, that we can't assume or expect that, uh, a parent guardian or an adult will be next to them the full time working with them on their learning. Uh, we know that's actually not the case. Uh, the, that links into the professional development. We've been working with, um, an organization, as I said, called GOA. Um, some of the focus has been about creating a welcome page, welcome video, how to humanize an online space for students. Uh, at the secondary level, there's a bootcamp that they're, they're doing, which is, is focused on these in the elementary. Uh, it's a little more, uh, less focused. Uh, it's not a bootcamp, but the principals have taken on leadership roles to advance the learning. Uh, today there was a session on transferring in-person learning to online space. And again, it gets that synchronous asynchronous piece of what, what do we want, what should be in a synchronous lesson and what do we want students to be, to be doing on their own? Uh, we've also worked with Bright, um, that program that we've spoken of before and a focus on wellbeing and anti-racism will continue. That was part of it and will continue, uh, to be a part of it. I thought, depending on time, um, there was a really nice visual that's describing, uh, and let's see if I can share my screen. Um, that describes some of the GOA work that we're doing and it's, I like it because it's simple. Um, and let's see if I can zoom in enough, uh, where people can make sense of it. It's not letting me. There we go. So if we think about the, the work they're leading us on, you know, there's four areas of design for student agency. Um, so again, how do we get students organized and how do we get them engaged and, um, connected to their learning? The wayfinding is a huge piece. That's something that we want to make sure that it's clear, that students know when they're supposed to be online. Um, they know how to find the resources they need. You know, we do this in person, uh, right? If you walk into school and if you walk into a classroom, students know where to get a pencil, they know where their books are. In the online world, that's a really different environment and takes really thoughtful, deliberate planning. Uh, again, design for relationships, I spoke about that. And design for assessment, right? So traditional tests aren't necessarily the best tool. Uh, we could argue whether the best tool in general, but they're particularly not the best tool to understand student learning in an online interface. So we are actively working with, um, them and they've been incredibly helpful. The feedback that I've received has been very supportive. And at the elementary level, there's, um, kind of message boards uh, that teachers have been posting on about all the resources, their learning. And what I love about is it really is allowed for our staff members uh, to learn from one another as well as from the content. And, you know, just reading through what they're sharing, it's, do you see that? How about this? And, and the resources are, are, are being kind of shared collaboratively, uh, which has been a really important thing. And one of the quotes I saw, uh, and when someone told me was how many times, but I wish I knew this in, in April. Um, I wish I'd had access to these resources in the spring. And obviously that wasn't so much in the cards in terms of the emergency, but I do feel like our staff are getting high-quality professional development that'll set up a much more successful experience this fall than what we had this spring. Additionally, um, and I'll pause in a second for questions. Uh, we have one at the high school, one in the Amherst, one, one in each of our three districts. We've, um, have three of our staff members who have taken on roles as, or part-time roles as distance learning coaches this year. Um, they have set up a website that is, um, evolving on a daily basis, um, that has resources for students, resources for families and caregivers and resources for staff members. Uh, they're providing trainings for staff. There was a optional training on a different, a number of different platforms this week. They had over a hundred staff members uh, attend that. Uh, and teachers could have been doing that, or teachers and parents, they could have been doing other things, but, uh, they saw value in it. And they're also, as I said, setting up, uh, sessions for families, uh, which would be really, uh, valuable. And something that I think, again, when we look back last spring, we felt like we didn't do enough of, we did a lot over the summer for summer school. We had a lot better success with that. Um, and I think the last thing I want to mention on the PD and distance learning piece before I transition to ventilation and technology and other ways is that we've purchased with our, um, COVID funds, a number of digital learning tools. Um, so, you know, Dreambox Math, K- Kido Math, Everyday Math Online Resource, where we had that. Raz Kids, Newsliya, Lexia, which is also Literacy and Mystery Science, which again, we had last year. So we're providing, we have a lot of high-quality products for the asynchronous piece, um, that students can be more self-directed on. Um, and so we think that that's really going to focus much of our, uh, elementary teachers' time and energy to provide, um, active choice and instruction, uh, that we know our students need from a relationship perspective and developmentally. And for some of that asynchronous time, we have a lot more tools at our disposal than we had last spring. And we think it's really critical. And there's going to be, you know, training for staff. There's a slide deck that one of our distance learning coaches put together, which just clearly explains these tools. And we'll be doing some more parent workshops over time on them as well. But what we know is that, you know, we don't want students on screens for six hours a day. There's lots of evidence that that's not what we want. Uh, we also want to provide tools for families who might benefit from having uh, programs where they can make a choice for more math practice or literacy or science that are highly engaging and, and much more self-directed because we know how challenging it is for families, uh, to be doing what they need to do as well as supporting their children in distance learning. That was a mouthful, so I'll pause there, um, or an earful, I guess. Um, I, I have a number of other things to share about Fall 2020, but that was really focused on the distance learning uh, and professional development part. So if there's any questions now, I'll take them and then after that, I'll, I'll keep rolling.
Mr. Menino?
Dr. Morris, how can the school committee member find out what distance learning is like? Uh, can you give us a, a sample class? Uh, uh, you can send out virtual schedules to the parents? Could you send the school committee members a sample virtual schedule? I, I can't, when I walk up and down the street, this is my only time out of the house. Uh, uh, neighbors say, what's going on? Well, what can I tell? There's going to be distance learning. That's all I can tell them that's going on.
Yeah. So early next week, we'll have that, you know, what we presented in the past, um, with, with samples, we're getting much more refined. And now that we have staff feedback, uh, we're going to be finalizing those. So next So next week, I can definitely get you that. I did send a video of some of the professional development slide deck to school committee. In that, in that slide deck, there are some clickable links, we can see examples of high quality distance learning. So that, that may be another place to take a look at in terms of having that resource and being able to understand a little what it looks like.
And then a point of clarification, you've mentioned it before, but there will be no opportunity for teachers and parents to get together physically at the beginning of the year. Is that correct?
That's something that would have to be dealt with in negotiations with our association.
Mr. Demling.
So my question's about what our thoughts are, as we, as this ramps up and kids, kids, kids use it and the weeks go by, as the, as the, as the school year goes on, what's our plan for, for tracking engagement? And it's, it's a different question than, than assessment. I don't mean like academic progress assessment, I mean like engagement. And I'm, I'm thinking about this from the point of view of, and school committee spent a lot of time in our priority document, right, about looking at the spring emergency remote learning and look, and thinking about the fall and really wanting to prioritize this higher level of student engagement. And so I think, I think everybody's on the same page and I think there's pretty clear understanding between, between us all about that. But then the question becomes, okay, you know, a month from now, six weeks from now, two months, how do we know that we've done that, right? And so how do we track that, that we've done that from like a systems level? And so I start to think about general metrics like, like attendance, but, but then you get, get into the weeds because you can track attendance in different ways and there may be other types of metrics. And I don't know all the details of the systems. So I'm just wondering, you know, the administrators of these systems must, you know, must be wrestling with these kinds of questions. So that's one. The other, the other thing about tracking engagement is that, you know, there's obviously additional challenges with remote learning about tracking individual level of engagement because, you know, you don't want to lose, with so many students in a large school district, you don't want to lose track of individuals, right? When you, when you, when you see kids coming through the doors every day, you have so many eyes, so many adult eyes, so many educator eyes on a student over the course of a day. And it's, it's harder with, with remote learning when there's that, that, there isn't that physical connection constantly. And so how do we make sure that, you know, kids aren't, you know, falling through the cracks, so to speak? You know, how do we make sure that not just the kids are doing their assignments and whatnot, but aren't, that they're engaging? So the sort of those two questions of student engagement, aside from progress. What, what your thoughts are on, on how we, how we're doing that?
Yeah, so I mean, I think as opposed to last spring, one thing that's clear is that attendance is a requirement that teachers take every class, every day. So that's not the full answer, but I want to answer it clearly on the attendance front. I think in the larger piece, actually, this is something that you all met Obed over the summer and we are really fortunate that he's doing an independent study with us this fall. So, you know, great experience for him, but I think we were, we are the more, the beneficiaries of that. And right now, he's actually working on a kind of wellness and engagement tool that we would use routinely to get a sense of what's the lay of the land and what are students responding and how are they feeling? And, and so, you know, there's a relationship between wellness and engagement. In my opinion, I think there's a lot of evidence around that so that it's not at the, only at the individual level, but it's at the, the group level that we're understanding how students are experiencing distance learning and how they're also experiencing the non-academic parts of, of distance learning, of not being in school. We've also talked about doing that in a mixed methods approach where he's able to do focus groups from time to time. So we hear from, you know, at least middle school and high school students, a little harder, but maybe upper elementary grade students on how they're experiencing things. And again, at the younger grades, it may be more through the eyes of a, a parent or caregiver or guardian, that we gather that feedback. But we weren't, we really want to gather that feedback routinely because things are going to be different. I mean, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm concerned a little bit of how things will shift when we go from, you know, beautiful days like we're going to have tomorrow to when the days get shorter and it's colder and students are outside less often and just, you know, if you're like me, tend to get a little nervous in November because it's, you know, it's going to be winter. And for some people, that's great. And for other people, quite a few, that's less great. So we want to have that, get a baseline and then be able to track that over time to assess both the wellbeing piece, but also the engagement piece. And we want to do it in a, you know, he's looking up kind of scientifically based tools that will adapt for our purposes. But we want to be very clear that it's, you know, not about individual student, but we want to have that assessment. At the individual student level, we do have our counseling team. And, you know, one of the points of real agreement between the, you know, Amherst Pelham Education Association and us is really this focus on family engagement. So some of the time next week, in that PD time, will be dedicated to having staff members start engaging the families that are in their class. And so we know that's critical to go from the get-go. We actually have built-in time at the elementary level in particular, but there's time in, in other schedules for family engagement on a regular basis. So it's not having to happen after school, but we want to promote as much parent and guardian contact as we can because we know without being in physical proximity, it's more of a challenge. And we definitely learned last year that communication was, was, was one of the things that people felt wasn't flowing smoothly. So, you know, between our family center, our counseling teams at the school level, but also an enhanced view of actually building in time on a daily basis for there to be family communication. We feel like those are things that we didn't do last spring that hopefully yield more positive results in the fall. Sorry, long-winded, but better than just saying four, four words, I hope.
Yeah, that was helpful. Any other questions on the first, first portion of Dr. Morris's update?
Okay. So. Here we go. That was, that was the bulk of it, but it's certainly not all of it. So I think I'll stay with the technology theme or distance learning. So thanks again to the PGOs for raising those funds. Last year, we used most of the hotspots. This year, we're, we're just about using all of them based on the request that have come in from families. So that, that's a gift that has continued to give beyond the spring. So I just want to again plug the Amherst Public School or all the PGOs for contributing to that effort because it continues to be a need in our community. We're getting a little anxious about when Chromebooks will come in. You know, ours are coming in before the state order, but you know, things aren't flowing as normally, as quickly as we'd like. So we, you know, our estimate got pushed back a week for that and the iPads. So we may have to kind of raid some of the Chromebooks in the schools and, you know, put the new ones in the schools when students come in. But, you know, Jerry Champagne and the IS department is doing tremendous amounts of work, has lists from families and staff members on technology needs and we're working as, as best we can. I believe the student desks for younger students was coming in this week. I think it might've come in today, but I've, I've lost track of that. If you remember that most of our students at the primary grade levels use tables, but we really need desks. And so hopefully the plan was by Friday to get them in school so we can start setting up. We have plenty of time, but we want to get them there as soon as possible. We got, as you'll notice at the end, a generous gift of face masks from a local company over, it's a six-digit gift. So we want to, we'll talk about it when we get gifts, but that's another wonderful tool for folks who want to wear that, our staff members that want to wear that, plus a mask, will have that opportunity. So thank you. We also had a great idea at one of the in-person town halls about buying cloth masks for young kids that they can decorate and make them assets their own and probably their backup because we want them, bring them from home. But it just, it seemed like, or if one gets, you know, soiled during the day. And so those were ordered and those have come in. So that's also really good news and thanks again for all the contributions and suggestions. Many of you were at that town hall. I thought it was fabulous and thanks to Ms. Consolino for taking quick action on that. The second to last thing on the virtual is we did a non-binding survey of grades, of phase two and three families. So basically we did the phase one survey, we got about 68% of families saying they were coming back and that one was a binding survey because it starts soon. We did a non-binding one just for planning. So far, we've got over 1,000 responses. So about two-thirds of the families we emailed, we have responses from. And to date, 69% of those families, students would choose in-person and 31% would be fully remote. So it actually matches the phase one almost exactly. Kind of interesting, one would have, I wouldn't have predicted it would be that close, but it seems like no matter how we ask, it ends up being between two-thirds and 70% of families suggest that they would want their children back in school. There was some variation by school. For what it's worth, Fort River had the highest percentage, 81% choosing in-person. And the lowest was the middle school at 66%. Again, not wildly off the average of 69%. But Fort River and Pelham were the, the highest numbers. And the secondary level had number 66, at the middle school, 67 at the high school. So they were a bit lower than the elementary numbers. But again, you know, relative to the scale, you know, pretty similar, you know, Fort River and Pelham, for whatever reason, were higher than the other two elementary schools. But, you know, I thought that'd be useful information for the committee to have. And we are running into an issue and it, it may be something that we want to pull up, you know, at a Pelham meeting more specifically sometime soon. If you might remember in our phasing plan, Pelham second grade was in phase one, whereas in Amherst, the second grade was in phase two. We did that because we have a lot of related service staff that work in multiple grade levels at Pelham. But what we're finding is with the split of remote and in-person and the collaboration across Union 26, we're not sure we can actually pull that off very well if Pelham second grade is on a different timeline than Amherst second grade. Because again, there are some shared staff in terms of the virtual education. So it is something that, you know, perhaps next week we can have, I don't want to go into depth with all the committees here, but it may be that even if we're meeting before a joint meeting, it's probably worthy having a Pelham specific meeting on second grade because there's some unanticipated consequences that have come up with that decision that we probably should talk through that's specific to Pelham. But I want to just tag it here so that we remember it at the end when we're doing upcoming topics.
Can you, could we pause? I saw.
Pause because I have one more about ventilation and testing results and then I, that, that would be the end, but I think this one, it was a good place to pause.
Yeah. I saw Mr. Manino's hand, that's why, a while ago. So Mr. Manino.
A minor point, does decorating a cloth mask affect its efficacy?
No.
That's my question.
It depends on how you, how you decorate it, but we're not using scissors or anything to decorate it. It would all be markers and things that go on. It's not like we cut out a snowflake or anything like that, you know?
I, I had a question of clarification on your comment about the Chromebooks coming in. These are the additional Chromebooks that are required for one-to-one for the younger elementary. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, well, it really cuts the, most of the secondary kids, with the exception of the seventh graders and new students, would have their Chromebooks from last year. So it, it really is looking at the elementary plus seventh grade in terms of the need for Chromebooks. So again, we feel comfortable right now with, you know, ratings, the wrong word, but utilizing the Chromebook carts that are in the elementary schools. We were hoping not to do that because then it involves another transition when the carts come in, when the Chromebooks come in. But I think, you know, at this point, we may not get there, so we may have to use the ones from the school site and have the new ones that come in be for the in-person, you know, in phase one when we get there. But, you know, it's, you know, it's frustrating for everyone. The state just got pushed back too and they're, they were hoping for early, late September and now I hear they're at mid-October. So this is, there's actually a bunch of, if you Google, you know, Chromebook delivery issues in schools, you'll find a lot of articles. This is a national issue and there are some districts in other parts of the country that are saying not till Thanksgiving. So we feel fortunate that Jerry was able to find resources that will be earlier than that. It's just when they actually will come in and same with the iPads. Sometimes they promise a date and it doesn't always come through.
So a, a related question, then, is there sort of a, a backup plan for, because we don't have iPads, obviously, in the, in the, in the classrooms and because those grades now are starting for two weeks remote, what is our backup plan?
It's really to use the carts that we have, you know, which isn't the best. And not every family has requested, and I, you know, just to be really clear, not every family at the elementary level has requested a Chromebook. Some feel like they have, whatever they have at home is sufficient. So that has really helped us with the numbers. We're a little, we probably wouldn't get there if it was literally every child who needed one, every student who needed one.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Spitzer.
So just a really small thing is that I remember we were all issued iPads by the district and I haven't been using mine. I don't know if it's of any use, but I'm happy to bring mine back if, if it could be of use to, to the district.
Thank you. I will raise that point with Mr. Champagne. And we're not doing budget presentations for a while, which is the primary use for those from school committee members. So thank you. I had not thought of that, but it really could make a difference. So thank you.
Yeah, likewise. I'm sure any of us would be willing to. Hand is over. Mr. Manino.
Likewise, you can have my computer back.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the technology portion of the update?
All right. So the last one is we had ventilation testing completed over the last two weeks. We've talked about it at this meeting before. Really what it was looking for, and it's a critical number, is air changes per minute, or air changes per hour, excuse me. I just scared. But, and we were looking at the rooms that would be used in phase one and we did a little more than that. And so we tested, we had tested over 80 different spaces. I think it's worth noting that we did not taste any of this, test any of the spaces in the middle school because at phase one, it's, it's a really small group of students who would be coming to the middle school. And so we'd be looking to relocate some of those, those students to be the high school. That actually idea came from some of our special educators that work in specialized programs. There is one supervisor of specialized programs at the middle school and high school. And just because it's so few students, opening the school with, you know, 25 students, just didn't make a lot of sense for the students themselves nor for the, the staffing and custodial and nursing and, and all that. So, so you won't find real testing results at this time for the middle school. The idea is to test phase two spaces, you know, in the month of September, so we get a good read on that. But overall, it was, there were really good results. Over 90% of our spaces tested over four air changes per hour. That's the increased ash ray standard minimum for, for COVID times. If you look at other places, other districts, you know, frankly, you know, like there's one district in, in Western Mass, but it's a, it's a comparative district that, you know, they were, they were looking for numbers over two. I've heard that from my colleagues in, in, incredibly locally. So we, we have a higher standard of looking for four and, you know, over 90% of our spaces ended up there. So at Crocker Farm, we tested 14 spaces. They all tested above four. The average was actually 7.3. One thing to note I should have said at the beginning is they were really enhanced by the air purifiers that we bought, the HEPA purifiers, because they, depending on the size of the space, can increase it between one and two air changes an hour on their own. And that air is actually considered fresher than the air that would come from an open window. At Fort River, we had 14 spaces tested. All of them were over four, the average is 5.5. At Wildwood, we had 11 spaces tested. The average is 7.7. There was one space that was under four, was at 3.5 or something like that, I think. And that was the library, which was tested in error, not that the results were in error, but it, we don't need that for phase one. We wouldn't have students in that space actually in general, but certainly not at phase one. But nonetheless, we have that result and we're going to look at what we can do to enhance the air changes in that space. At Pelham, there were six spaces tested and they all were above four. The average is actually 13.3 in Pelham, which is incredibly high. At high school, we had 41 spaces tested. There were five spaces that, that fell under. Two or three of those spaces, let me look actually, I apologize. Three of those spaces, the units weren't functioning well. They weren't functioning, so we're looking at those. And then in two of the spaces, the numbers were low. And so we're looking at all five of those spaces. We feel confident that at least three or four of them, we can get working above four and we'll have those retested in the next two weeks. The reality is with, we, we, as you know, we're planning for phase one being 100% of students in person because we had to, we had to plan for the highest possible number. With 68% of students planning to be back in person, we have enough spaces at our high school to meet the demand of all the students that we, you know, would actually be coming back. actually be coming back. So we're still going to work on it, because we know there's a phase-two and phase-three coming. So it's not like, oh, we're just not going to worry about it. We're going to worry about it and work on them. But we know we now have sufficient spaces that are, have the ventilation above four for all students in phase one. So it was reassuring to know. Our buildings aren't super new. We're very, you know, an odd way fortune. The more people I speak to, there's plenty of schools in Massachusetts that have no ventilation, except open air and heat, right? They don't have actually UNIVENTS that are functioning, and thanks to the facilities team for purchasing. Can't tell you how many calls or texts I've gotten from other superintendents in Massachusetts in the last two weeks, saying, "I heard you bought some things that are helpful. What are they? The unit number?" You know, and I feel like I'm like a salesperson for that company now. But it's just because, you know, people were on the ball on our team at knowing that this was going to be something that was important on the HEPA, but also important on the ventilation side as well. So I appreciate all the work that went into that. We certainly have more things to do and more things to test, but this, you know, this seems to be the metric that across the country seems the most prevalent. If like you look at, like, you know, the Chan Center at Harvard and what they're focusing on, the air changes per hour seems to be the metric that is particularly critical in terms of this, the era that we're living in right now. And so we were really pleased to see the results. And I think, the other thing to note, and I want to, you know, I think it's worth saying, these things don't happen by their own. We don't have the newest HVAC equipment. It happens because our facilities team has done routine, regular maintenance over the years that has kept these machines running effectively. And that's sort of noted, actually, in the cover page that we received from the HVAC consultants. But I think it is really true. And I talked to other places, and I'm not going to try to be negative and mention other districts, but there are districts really who are finding half their machines not working right now, whose reports are not, reports are not coming out with almost any spaces above four, and their equipment's not wildly different than our equipment. So I really want to thank the custodians and maintenance staff for the work they do. They don't have the Rolls-Royce model of HVAC systems in their schools, but their routine maintenance and their efforts has resulted in the data that we got. It's not just kind of like, oh, we have a great new building, and that's why we have our data. It's actually because of the work and the sweat that our staff puts into the buildings that helped get the results. And I just think it's a really important point, because, you know, again, these results- And I'm not trying to say they're perfect, and there's not things to work on. There certainly are. But they're really strong compared to other districts that we've talked to, particularly other districts with the era of building, vintage buildings that we have. And just, I really want to thank our HVAC technician and our facilities team and our custodians for the work they do. Because, you know, it's not, it's not the work that gets recognized enough. But you're in a pandemic, and you're in a crisis, and you realize, I'm really glad that they were keeping on top of that work. So I'll stop there, but I just, you know, felt really strongly about acknowledging that the work didn't happen overnight or just this summer. It happened over years where other places, you know, have really different results, that were buildings built at the exact same time.
Yes. I'll speak again. I'll let others speak first. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so thank you for that update. That's really great news. It's, you know, it's something that we've known we've wanted to get the results of for a little while. So it's great. Is, I guess, just first, just logistically, if we could get that made available on the website or the Fall reopening website, I think there'll be a lot of public interest in the, in the information. If, whether or not the actual consultant report or summary, I don't, I haven't seen the actual reports. I don't know if it's, if it's human readable or not. Sometimes those are, but sometimes people like the source information, so. But in, you know, in a way that, because I think people have been, you know, keyed into the idea of, of the indoor air quality being a key piece to this. And we've done a lot of, we've had a lot of lengthy discussions about that on School Committee and focused rightly about all the variables that go into that. And this is, this is one of those key pieces. And so the fact that, like you said, years of effort have gone into making this piece go very rightly, I think is going to be an important piece for the public to understand. I guess my question is, you know, so this seems like a really big piece that has fallen to place. So like, so can we assume now that, like, I mean, do you feel like all systems are go for return in-person on, for phase-one students on October 1st? Is this really like the, one of the big final pieces you were waiting to hear on?
Yeah, this is definitely a huge one. You know, and this is the one, if you, again, I'm sure many of you are tracking this around the state. And this is one, you know, particularly the air changes and the ventilation, seems like one where lots of people are struggling. And that's just a sad, sad state of school buildings in Massachusetts. That's not trying to put down any other districts who are struggling. I want to be really clear about that. But it's really hard. I mean, there's depression-era schools, right, that have never have been updated with their HVAC system. They're not going to be at four, right? Doesn't matter how many air purifiers you put in the room. It's just not going to get there. And so, you know, we still want to look at humidity and other, there are other aspects we want to look at, but a lot of those other aspects, we're able to do ourselves. And we, you know, we're able to look at the humidity in our rooms on a routine basis, starting on October 1st, actually really helps, you know. Hopefully by then, we're done with the 95-degree days with 90% humidity that make things really hard in terms of ventilation and comfort level and humidity. So there are other pieces we want to look at, but, you know, if you look at all the research from like the Parabola Experience, I think I've shared some of that, you know, all that work, really the ventilation piece and how many air changes is a critical, critical piece. And that's why we emphasize getting that data early on. It's also not one that we can necessarily test ourselves very easily. I'll put it that way. For those of you who have seen the data table, it's complicated, you know, about how you quantify this. We would put it on the website altogether, because I think it is a public document. There'd be no need not to. And we're not, we're also clear that there's a couple of rooms we need to work on, right? It's not perfect. But, you know, in terms of getting the sufficient spaces that have the sufficient airflow and ventilation, it was really, it was really great news.
Mr. Manino?
Following up on Mr. Demling's question, when do you think we'll have an agreement whether or not school will be in-person on October 1?
So by agreement, I assume you're talking about bargaining with our employees?
When will we know that in-person learning on October 1st is assured? When will we know that?
Yep. So I think the negotiations are ongoing. We had a session today. We have two more this week. And we're, I think everyone's working as quickly as they can to get to the place that you're talking about. But I can't claim to be able to answer your question explicitly. It's the right question to ask. It's not a critique, Mr. Manino, because it's not something that, I tend to like to predict things that I can control. And this is, this is, has to be a joint agreement, right? And so everyone's working hard. Everyone's trying their best. But I think next week we'll meet, and we'll have an update. And I, to your point, it feels like, you know, it's four weeks away. And that's feeling really soon to many people. And I want to acknowledge that point, that I get that, ask that question an awful lot, too.
The only reason I ask is that the eight people I meet on the road, dog walking, ask me that one question. When will we know?
We will communicate when we do know that, answer that question loudly and widely.
I think, and this is not to say that anybody, anybody on this meeting has the answer to Mr. Manino's question, but just to clarify for folks at home, not everybody that is in this meeting on this call right now. It was part of the executive session that happened earlier, where we specifically talked about this. So I just want to clarify so that folks aren't wondering why one of us is asking a question that we certainly should have knowledge about, because we don't all have the same knowledge. The, does anybody else have questions or comments about the ventilation? So, well, I'll add on to, or pile on, if I will, that this is really, really good news. I did, I did read the report when, when you distributed it to the committee. And I will sort of join in the, in the praise and just deep, deep thanks to our facilities and maintenance and custodial team that has been working on this a lot this summer, as well as over the years. Because in my mind, this was sort of the one question mark that we still had. We've put together, our committees and the district has put together a really solid plan for, for safety and health and keeping our students, staff, and families safe, and back to school in person. And this was the piece that, as you pointed out, Dr. Morris, we couldn't test ourselves. And so we didn't know until we received this report. And I think that this is, this is really huge piece and important, good news for us to be able to feel confident in, in our plan. And then, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but the HEPA filters in our ventilators are not the only items that are helping ensure indoor, you know, strong indoor air quality, correct? There's other, other tools. This is, again, just one piece of many, that together, all of these pieces contribute to making being indoors, in, in schools, classrooms imaginable for, during a pandemic. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, the filters within the UNIVENTS are all being replaced, the exhaust fans being replaced. I'll say, you know, it's amazing being at Fort River and Wildwood. You know, probably Mr. Harrington and his other hat, and I are the only ones who have had the opportunity. But for those of you who have been in those two buildings, to see what a half quad looks like is just wildly different. And I think in particular, to your question, having the vents split so that it's not a shared vent system out between the multiple quads, as well as having two UNIVENTS in the space that are blowing and cross-ventilating the air, you know, you know, there's no way to know what the results would have been in the old quad system, except, I'm not an expert, but I'm pretty sure they wouldn't have been as good with the amount of temporary walls that were up, that, you know, air travels over, but they get in the way. And the shared vent system, I just, you know, I don't believe it's true. I think our challenge is going to be, what do we do post-pandemic? But I'm worried about the pandemic problems now and less about the, the post-ones, because the classrooms are also beautiful. Like, it's a strange thing to say. It doesn't solve all the problems in the buildings. They still need to be replaced. But compared to what I've experienced, both as a teacher at Fort River and just walking around the schools, particularly Fort River, with the real wall at 1,900 square feet, they're huge spaces that have light coming in ways that it never did. And it really opened up the space in ways that I could never sort of imagine. It's still got lots of problems, but they've, you know, from ventilation, airflow, it really feels like a different space. You know, and Mr. Harrington, I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask in your other role, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not something that you don't realize when you, right when you walk in, that you, you know, you hear, you know, you get the blowers going from both ways. You can open up windows that, even though one's in a courtyard, the other one's outside, and you can get cross-ventilation that way. And just knowing that the venting, it's really clear that there's an end to that, and that it's, it's only one classroom at a time sharing that. It really does make a huge difference. So all those efforts that our facilities, custodial, and maintenance department have made, I think you're right, contribute to, you know, a better experience, you know. And we're learning a lot for our post-COVID times, too. You know, again, that's not where our focus is, but I think we're learning a lot about what we can do and how we can do things better, and how we can support our fantastic staff better in terms of custodial maintenance, so that, you know, we have long-term benefits to this work as well.
Does anybody else have questions or comments? Mr. Harrington?
I was kind of going to hold off on my comment until I was talking to the facility staff directly tomorrow. But yeah, I absolutely do have to commend, like, the folks who've dedicated countless hours to this and their professionalism. We have an awesome staff in general. And I kind of want to, I don't want to embarrass anyone, but our HVAC specialist is, I mean, he's hands-down probably one of the most professional people I've ever worked with. And, I mean, his dedication kind of drove this, and I just want to commend him. Can I say his name? Is it all right to say his name?
Please do.
Doug Pion. Doug Pion is an absolute champion. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. We had a, we had a consultant a couple of years ago came in for a project and said, you know, you know your HVAC guy's a magician, right? I was like, yes, I do. I do, I do. I'm aware of that. But I'm glad you mentioned that, and I'm glad Doug's getting called out publicly, because he's really done a great job.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Seeing none. And, and Dr. Morris, I believe you confirmed that this, the report you'll be posting it on the Fall 2020 webpage?
Yeah, we'll put that up tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll put the full report, the summary, the two summaries, but also the room-by-room data.
Excellent. Good. If there's no more comments or questions on this, we move on. Great. Okay. So next is our future agenda planning. And I think we are looking at having a meeting next week. And a joint meeting of the three meetings, again?
Well, I think there's, it's going to be another one that's complicated, because I think the region's going to have to meet to talk and vote on athletics. Pelham, I think we'll have to, maybe we'd do it in separate meetings, but Pelham's going to have to meet and talk about grade, or I would like to encourage us to talk about grade two and what phase they're in. And I think that should be a Pelham-specific meeting. And then we probably should have an update to Mr. Manino's question to update the community on where we, if there are updates to be had, where we are, and if nothing else, to more on distance learning and some of the questions about schedule. So 9:26, I don't know if my head's in the right place to think about if we can do all those things. And we may need an executive session as well. So I don't know if we can do all of that in one night, or if it makes sense to break it up and do at least one, if not more, of those topics, not all together. And there may be other things, but those are the ones in my head that we would have to do.
We have an update on the, we heard on the Title IX policy. That was another one that I think we would mention in the past meeting.
Yeah, I've talked to, I'll see, I'll talk to, I think the attorney was just about done with the draft of a sample policy for us to review. So I'll put that on my list tomorrow to see if we can get that document out to everybody here.
Any other agenda topics? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, since we got an update on athletics tonight, and not everybody participates in athletics, I'd like to hear an update on performing arts and possibly clubs.
Now that we're into September, I know we're going to have overlapping processes, but we do have to, at some point, start talking about 2020, 2021 superintendent goals before the 2020, 2021 year ends.
Actually, oh, I'm sorry. Miss Seager, I understand.
Miss Seager?
If, if you wanted to respond to him first, that's, that's fine. No. What I'm interested in learning more about as, as a representative from Leverett is, at some future meeting, what, what's going on with discussions for the sixth graders in Amherst/Pelham moving to the middle school? And I realize that might be totally on hold, but at some point, I'd love to catch up on it so I can share it with my community. Thanks.
What I'd like to, also at our next meeting, it probably isn't a joint topic, but also just map out our calendar for the year. So that we can get back to at least more predictability, or try to. It will ever be predictable during this year, but.
Ms. McDonald, I don't know if there's any evaluation stuff and when that date is. Or Ms. Spitzer, I don't, I don't know if that's next week or the week after. So I couldn't remember.
I believe it's the week after, because committee members have until the 14th to complete the evaluation.
So it would be the 21st, 22nd. The 14th is the Monday, correct?
I think so.
So the week of the 21st would be when we would review the results?
Right. Thank you.
They're, moving on to the next item, we have the warrant report. I know Ms. Spitzer has several. I have one, so I'll let you look, dig up yours and get ready while I read my one. So, I, Alison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $270,499.23 for a warrant dated August 19th, 2020. This includes general fund expenses of $39,810.90, revolving fund expenses of $230,688.33. And I signed that on the, it looks like the 19th. So Ms. Spitzer?
So quick question. I have some annual scholarship payments. I'm assuming I shouldn't be reading out all the names of the students, or should I be? I'm assuming I shouldn't be reading out the names of the students or should I be? There was no summary provided for me. It's just I have the, the warrant, so.
I think you can read them, but probably playing it safe is always a good idea.
So I'll just, more information is available upon your request if you would like to know more about the warrant scholarships. But I've got 10 of these, so I'm going to try to be as quick as possible, but hold with me. All right, so I. Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature, payments for annual scholarships in the amount of $3,000 on, for a warrant dated August 13th, 2020. I also authorized by my signature a request for funds, for student activities funds and the principal's checking amount. There's a transfer request from the senior high school in the amount of $17,639.06, which was dated July 31st, 2020. I. Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $117,674.50 for a warrant dated August 6th, 2020, for general fund expenses of that amount. This was signed by me on August 16th, 2020. That one looks like a repeat. I also authorized by my signature a payment for annual scholarships on August 20th, 2020, in the amount of $500. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $731,289.55 for a warrant dated August 20th, 2020. That was for general fund expenses of the same amount and was signed by me on August 25th, 2020. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $156,944.40 for the warrant dated August 18th, 2020. This covered general fund expenses of $125,363.23 revolving fund expenses of $4,982.82 and grant fund expenses of $26,680.35. And this was signed by me on August 25th. I. Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $289,562.47 for a warrant dated August 28th, 2020. This covered general fund expenses of $164,482.96 revolving fund expenses of 27, sorry, $2,746.11 and grant fund expenses of $122,150.11 and other funds in the amount of $183.39. And that was signed by me on September 2nd of 2020. I also authorized annual scholarship payments in the amount, on August 26th, 2020, in the amount of $2,000. And I believe that is it. So, thank you.
Great. Next we have, moving on to our next item, we have gifts. And we do have some to play. I just pulled it up, so I can display it, Dr. Morris, if you.
Would you like me to display it?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. Is that visible?
Yes. Would somebody, somebody feeling interested in, in making a motion?
I'm still unmuted, so I'm happy to. So I moved that the, these all to the region. I moved that the Amherst Regional, I, I moved that the regional school committee accept the following gifts from the Children's Theater Foundation of America, number 1174, to support the Amherst Regional High School Theater Program in the amount of $1,000. From Scott and Karen Garman, number 694, to support the Amherst Regional Pelham Public Schools, sorry, Athletics donated, donated their cancellation refund. Thank you very much. It's in the amount of $456. From anonymous dash yourcause, number 5602066808, to support the middle school at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10. From anonymous, yourcause, number 5602078966, to the middle school at the principal's discretion in the amount of $20. From the ARPS PGO Inc., DBA, ARMS PGO, to support the ARMS Teacher Lounge improvements in the amount of $500. From AM Lithography and Packaging Corporation, 55,800 face shields for Amherst Pelham Regional and Public Schools, estimated value of 100, Such a big number, I'm having trouble reading it. Thank you very much. For a total, and this total must be, oh, this is the total of the non-estimated amount, is $1,986. Thanks for bearing with me. Oh, and in addition, in compliance with state regulations regarding the receipt of gifts, I suggest that the Amherst, Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee officially accept these donations at its next scheduled meeting. In addition, the Children's Foundation of America 2020 Robertson Award to John Bechtold in the amount of $5,000. And congratulations to him.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I just want to, for those of you who don't know, John Bechtold's a theater teacher at our high school and he won a major national award. He's, he's the recipient, as you saw, of the R. Robertson Award. And, you know, he does a tremendous amount of work and this is a huge honor that, actually every other year, excuse me, since 2008. And it's just, it's, it's, it's well deserved. I think you all know, I think you've, many of you have seen Mr. Bechtold present at the regional school committee about his programming. You know, those who've been on the committee multiple times. And it, he is a treasure for our schools and for students. And I'm just so pleased that he's receiving the recognition for his amazing creativity and dedication to students. I mean, I always joke if, if I'm ever locked out of the high school at any hour, you know, I can either call the principal or I could call John Bechtold because he's probably there. And I'm just so glad that his hard work, dedication and great work is being recognized. So just want to call, call that out so people know what it was, that it's, it's a huge, huge award in terms of the recognition and honor and it's well deserved by John.
Could you describe a little bit more about the gift from AM Lithography, please?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So this is a company that has shifted and they're doing face shields. And they reached out to us and said, you know, we're happy to, you know, donate some face shields to a local school district. And we thought that, you know, maybe they'd give us, you know, 50 or 100. And they said, no, what do you want? And, you know, you always, you know, pinch yourself and say, really? You know, and they said, no, no, just tell us what you need. So we looked and we assessed what we might need over a whole year if, you know, all the scenarios of teachers wearing them and wanting to wear them with masks. And, and they said, no, no problem. We're happy to do that and they're coming in this week. And so they reached out. That was all through Ms. Constantino and kind of her knowledge of folks in the field. So it's, it's incredible that there's that kind of donation. But I think that's, we're fortunate to live in Western Mass where people are really dedicated to kids being in school and making sure everyone's doing that safely.
That's wonderful. Mr. Menino?
Are these those plastic masks that look like welding things that, that people wear on their head?
Yes.
Wow, that's something special.
Great. There's no further discussion. Then we'll move on to a vote.
Did your motion get a second?
I seconded it, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
But thank you. And this is a, a region vote, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So the motion passes 9 to 0. And I believe, does somebody from Amherst want to make a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Lord, second?
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Lord. There's no discussion. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer? And McDonald, aye. The Amherst School Committee is adjourned. Somebody making a motion for the region?
I'll move to adjourn.
Lord, second?
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Lord. There's no discussion. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the region is adjourned. Bye, everybody.
Okay, here we are. All right, so our only item is the superintendent evaluation and the evaluation instrument. So, oh, yes, go ahead, Ron.
Thanks, Amherst Media. They're willing to support our Pelham friends for a limited amount of time so that it continues to be broadcast.
Is this a first for our committee?
Second, actually. Yeah, they've been very generous the last couple of weeks where we've had some small Pelham-only meetings.
Thank you, Amherst Media.
I did tell them that when we're back in person, that there's often food and we'd invite them.
That's fair. Okay. So Dr. Morris sent around his one pager with the links to the artifacts. And then I had also circulated the evaluation instrument. So I guess any, we can talk about timing and also questions. Some of the things that have come up, anyone on the committee currently may complete an evaluation, regardless of how much time you've served on the committee, but it's not a requirement. So with that instrument typically, and so Mike, do you know, does Sasha, will she be able to do the Survey Monkey thing like she had done for the region?
Yeah, I think once she gets a go-ahead from you, she'd be all set.
Okay, yes. So she puts together a Survey Monkey, so you can just go through and fill it out that way. So I guess any questions on either the artifacts document or the, the actual evaluation instrument? Okay, yeah, Mr. Menino. Or no, let's go, no, sorry.
I found the one pager from Mike informative and helpful. As usual, I find the questionnaire a little difficult to follow, but I figure it out as I go along. I want a chance to evaluate him as quickly as possible.
Okay, great. Any hesitation on voting on the instrument tonight or any other questions? Okay. Well, I will take a motion to vote on that instrument.
I move that we accept the instrument as presented.
Great.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All right. All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Ron?
Ron, yay. I didn't know.
I know, I switched back to first names. I can't handle the Mr. and Ms. Okay. Margaret?
Dancer, aye.
Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass, aye.
Brenda?
Brenda, aye.
And Hall, aye. Okay. And then in terms of timing, I know for the region, they're doing two weeks. I mean, did it? Well, I guess, Dr. Morris, I'll ask you. Do you feel like you, do you want the, when we're done, do you want the presentation to be part of a separate meeting? So you're not getting into these marathon meetings and we can be a little more flexible? Do you have a preference?
I don't. I mean, my, my experience the last couple of years is it's a lot of work for the chairs. I don't want to minimize that. But actual, the actual evaluation conversation, it tends to be quite brief. Like, I think a lot of the work, my experience, a lot of the work of the committee has been on the front end of like reading all the artifacts and doing the evaluation. And then when, when it's actually compiled and voted, it tends to be a rather brief meeting, so it doesn't, either way is fine with me.
Okay, all right. And I guess for other committee members, in terms of how much time you have and how much time you need to do this, do folks have opinions about when we would do it? Yeah, Sarah Bass?
Can it just not be the same week so there can be a week in between? I am feeling slammed with school committee stiffs.
The same week as the, as the region?
Yeah.
So I, I was not really paying attention. When, when is that due?
The 14th.
Due on the 14th, okay. Could we target something for the following week? That be? Okay, all right. All right, so we'll do that. When Sasha puts it together, I'll have her send out a more clear actual deadline. Okay, I think that's it. Any questions on process or anything?
Just when will we get it from Sasha?
Well, I'll, I'll send her an email. I mean, I think she can put them together fairly quickly, but I don't want to promise a date. So.
Okay.
Soon-ish, but she's got approximately one million other things, so. But I'll, I'll let you know when I hear from her, when, when she thinks it'll be. All right. Anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Whoa, that's the fastest motion I've seen. Brenda, did you just second?
I did second, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, roll call vote. All right, Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass, aye.
Brenda?
Brenda, aye.
Ron?
Ron, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
And Hall, aye. Pelham is adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, take care.